With that then, I will call to order the March tenth, twenty twenty-two Lewisville Planning Commission Meeting with a roll call, please.
Yeah, Chair Brown Eyes.
Here.
Mr. Krantz.
Here.
Mr. Osterman.
Here.
Mr. Deal.
Here.
Mr. Howe.
Here.
And Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hearing no. But against that, we will move forward. And then do we have? Yeah, we have the amendments for the February tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion to approve those, please.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Thank you, Mr. Moline. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I believe everybody was who's in current attendance was there then, so. Yeah, needs to recuse themselves from that. At this point, I would open it up to public comments for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If it is anything to discuss, if there's people who want to discuss something that is on the agenda, we'll be getting to that a little bit later here. Let me see.
We've got one member of the public who has their hand raised.
Okay. Great. Okay, then we can recognize Oberholzer.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I am Mark Oberholzer. I live at two-two-four Hoover Avenue here in Louisville. I own the corner downtown. I also own Tilt Pinball and the Louisville Underground. But I'm speaking to you at this moment as the Vice President of the Downtown Business Association. So last month that your meeting I had attended in order to support the applicant Caitlin with the the event venue up on Main Street there. And after close to three hours of waiting through the meeting, you guys decided to continue that particular item to this month. I somewhat understood it. It was very late. We had all been there a long time. I, for one, was somewhat appalled at that decision at the moment. I mean, I had sat there for three hours waiting to present. So had Caitlin and Dan and Eric. So that seemed like a long time to suddenly have that decision made. But the bigger issue from the DBA standpoint is that when decisions like this are made by a government group, it puts a pretty big burden on the business that's being affected. So so now everything has been pushed back at least one month by that decision. And and if she is, for example, trying to start a wedding business, getting pushed off a month could be enough to tip the scales that suddenly she can't have a full wedding season next year. And so it's just, it it brings to light somewhat the larger issue that the DBA is generally concerned with with the the awareness that government has as far as what their decisions, how their decisions affect how businesses can operate. So so this this was just another example. So what happens now is if you guys make a decision tonight, I found out from Austin with the city that that this won't go to city council until April sixteenth, which is another five weeks. You know, and then who knows what the decision will be then. So so all of these delays just kind of build up. And so I would just encourage you to be cognizant of that in the future when making these decisions. And I have a feeling that if we had been in person, you know, you might have seen the the look of dismay upon our faces, and perhaps the decision would have been different. I feel a little bit disconnected in this environment, not that any of us can do anything about it. But one of the issues, too, is that I am here to speak in favor of the applicant, but unfortunately, I have other plans, and I'm not able to attend the rest of the meeting. So so again, you know, I sat through that meeting last week for three hours, and now I'm not able to put my comments in. It's possible it might work out. So Caitlin, I assume you're listening here. If you're able to text me maybe when you guys are up and it's time for public comment, I can see if I can break away from what I'm doing and come back on. But so anyway, just wanted to point out some of the some of the issues that that came up as a result of your decision last month. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments regarding process. And I'll just speak openly. We will be ending this meeting at between nine and nine fifteen this evening. As we do most of our meetings, we will, we only do have one agenda item on for this evening. And we'll be taking some breaks in between now and then as necessary. I would like to then, and I don't see anybody else who's here to speak for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So we will move into our continued item here. I will now reopen the public hearing on a request for a both the LMC Amendment regarding banquet or reception halls and the nine fifty-seven Main Street Banquet SRU. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the Planning Commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, we've already had the presentation and testimony by city staff, but we will have a quick recap of that, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to staff necessary. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. And then we will, unless I skip the page. Yeah, no, then we'll move into our hearing. So I believe that we'll have a recap of the staff presentation.
That's correct, Chair.
I'm not quite hearing you really faintly.
If I'm closer, is that is that better?
There we go.
Good. Sorry about that. All right. Is it okay if I share my screen and begin?
Yes, please.
All right. And everyone can see it, okay, I trust? Excellent. All right. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Again, I have before you this evening a request for approval of an ordinance to amend Title seventeen for to create a use group for our banquet or reception halls, and also a request for approval of an SRU to allow for a banquet or reception hall at nine fifty-seven Main. This item was continued from the February tenth meeting. And so I'll run it briefly. I have a couple of slides. I've brought it down, but of course, I have it ready. Our old slides, if we need to refer to them for for any reason, I have those prepared still as well. So just as, you know, brief context again, this is the location of the the subject property for the SRU. That's the vicinity map showing you the subject property outlined in yellow. And then just that picture at the center of your screen shows you the property as it stands there at the corner of Main and South Streets. As a reminder, tonight, there are two requests before you. One for the code amendment to create the banquet or reception hall use group. And then the second request is for approval of a special review use at the property. And so the proposed definition there is before you, as outlined, there is banquet or reception hall. And then the proposed use would would allow an SRU in the commercial and industrial districts listed there in the third bullet point. And then it would not be permitted in any residential or agricultural zones. This slide here before you now goes over the the second of the two requests before you this evening. And it notes that this SRU proposal does not have any changes to the exterior, and the proposed likely development of the floor plans are those last bullets there on your screen. And so the two top floors are the first and second floor, I should say, would consist of event spaces and the the six hundred ninety square feet of the basement is proposed as an indoor drinking establishment. And then this this slide before you just notes that when reviewing the SRU criteria for this, or you request, Steph does find that it meets all five of the criteria. And then as a quick reminder, there is the table before you that listed out the methodology or the way in which staff calculated some of the parking spaces and some of the occupancy to help limit it down to either three hundred and seventy-two persons total or two hundred and fifty-one for per event. And I'm happy to go into that further, of course, but just in the sake of brevity, just putting it there. So then, after the presentation, both last month and this month, of course, Steph would would recommend approval of both resolutions, pardon me, before you this evening. And so Resolution four, which would be for the code amendment, has no conditions, and Resolution five, which would be for the SRU, Steph is recommending approval of Resolution five with the condition that a note be added to the SRU stating that the reception hall shall not operate past twelve AM. And and with that, I'm here for any questions. And then we also have the applicant team. I believe I'd have to go back, but they are ready to present as well.
All right. Do we have any questions right now, Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, Kim, maybe if you could go over the parking requirements in a little bit more detail, and then I'm particularly interested in understanding what the parking requirements or allowances would be if it was a use by right. So, for example, if it was just a regular restaurant bar versus what, you know, the ask is in this application.
Sure. So I'll I'll start that if that's okay with your second question first, just to dive into that. So really, with downtown, if, for instance, there is no additional square footage being added. So again, I we would be looking a little bit different because the basement is having that six hundred and ninety square foot of additional space kind of being added, technically speaking. It's an addition on the exterior but being added in in the general development. But if you were looking at a typical restaurant in downtown that comes in and is just changing, right, just changing over and putting the use of that property, the use of that restaurant in the downtown, there wouldn't be any parking that we would look at in specific. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have any sort of ratios or anything specifically looked at. What does trigger more more parking that we look at is, again, that that extra square footage. So there are some particular, you know, kind of caveats in the downtown code that says if you're adding so much square footage, in which case this six hundred and ninety square foot would trigger that. There's a note in its PUD. So that's where we would look at then, the use of a restaurant space or other spaces to to kind of decide parking. So I know it's a little bit general, but typically, for most restaurants in downtown, we wouldn't necessarily look at the parking as directly or as closely as we're looking at here. And then I can pull back up just to answer some of those questions. I pull back up my presentation for would it be helpful, I think, just to have that table up again, I imagine?
Yeah.
So I can I can talk through it. I'll go through it a little quickly here, but again, I'm happy to to give in more detail and then go into even more detail if needed. So what we looked at here with the table that's before you is sort of, again, our methodology to help try to understand and further analyze the parking, given the context of the use. So I'll start first by saying that just in general with with looking at the square footage, if we were to base the occupancy numbers, and I know I'm talking about occupancy first, since that's kind of how we backed into parking. So I know it sounds a little different, but in general, if we were to base the occupancy number strictly on the building code, standard maximum occupancies and their allowances, this particular building with its square footage numbers would be able to accommodate roughly seven hundred occupants that would depend on floor layout, but a general number. And so with that's kind of where we started, and then to help mitigate that number, and then, of course, to help better analyze occupancy and parking numbers more directly to your question, staff had worked with the applicant to limit that total occupancy to three hundred and seventy-two. So you see that number on the green portion on the right-hand side total, you see one twenty-four spaces, three seventy-two occupancy. And that's based on three hundred and seventy-two is based on a calculation of parking using a restaurant parking ratio from our commercial guidelines as a base. And so that base was the fifteen, it's fifteen spaces per one thousand square feet. And so those parking numbers that are listed on that first white line of the table, so it says sixteen fifty-four fifty-four to equal that one twenty-four. Those, that's where we, that's where we sort of got those numbers. So we based fifteen to fifteen per one thousand. So you can see just as to to quickly go into more detail. If you look at main level, thirty-five hundred eighty square feet, you do that divided by thousand times fifteen. So that's where the fifty-four came from. So we use that that to help guide us. And so from there, we got the spaces, and then we other places in the city look at theaters or event spaces. So similar type uses, their occupancy is is the event occupancy or that type of seating is one parking space per three seats. So that's where one twenty-four times three ostensibly is the three hundred and seventy-two. So again, that was just a way to back into to try to mitigate that larger number. And so so that's where those numbers came from. The two hundred and fifty-one was a further mitigation effort. Talked with staff and then with the applicant to to help limit even further to say, would you be willing with when an event is going on, that it's two hundred and fifty-one in general, which doesn't directly relate to parking. It is an occupancy number, but would help mitigate those parking numbers kind of on the back end. And I see Rob's come in, so I'll let him jump in as well.
Sure. I just wanted to try to kind of zero in on downtown parking. So the I think the question was, what is the parking requirement for this development? So when this development came in, there was a PUD. We're not doing the PUD now. We're just doing a, you know, a new SRU. And we determine that by the square footage of the building. And the idea in downtown is that, again, parking is not all onsite. It's distributed through the downtown. There's public parking, public parking lots. There's a lot of street parking. It's a pedestrian-oriented development. So it's different than our typical commercial uses. So the parking standard is that the first or the parking standard for a new development is that it's one per five hundred square feet. So it's one space for five hundred square feet. That's onsite. That's their parking requirement onsite. Doesn't mean that's enough parking to service the building. All downtown developments rely on off-street park or on on-street parking and public parking lots in order to service the building. There's shared parking throughout all of downtown. So I just want everybody to understand that that that's how downtown parking works. That's how we maintain, you know, a strong pedestrian downtown core where we don't have large seas of parking lots for our businesses. Because this is a special review use, we're looking at the use differently. We're saying, hey, this is a, this is a maybe, this is a non-typical use for this commercial corridor. And one of the one of the factors that we can consider is, is there a parking impact for this use that would be different than a typical commercial use in our downtown that would be a use by right? So everything that Kim just went over, although it's kind of complicated and we're doing it backwards, is we're just trying to say, what's the parking impact on downtown potentially at its highest use as a way to come up with some limitations? So I just wanted to add that, and I hopefully that helps some clarify with some clarification on downtown parking requirements.
Yeah, maybe a clarifying question, or maybe you can respond to this. So just trying to understand if if the application before us was just a restaurant, right? And maybe it wouldn't even need to need to come for us. And we said, they're gonna, we're gonna have a limit of about two hundred and fifty-one people in second and third floor, the total occupancy of three seventy-two. I mean, would that even require review?
Right. So restaurants are used by right in downtown. It does not require a special review use. So you wouldn't be seeing it. You, you know, you're, when you're looking at a PUD, sometimes the uses are known, but they're not typically restricted in a PUD. It's restricted by the zoning. You know, PUDs are more of design documents, and you can have conditions on how that that's operating. But within this zone district, there's a whole series of allowed uses that could go into any of these buildings. So those are office uses and restaurants, you know, retail and services, any of those are used are allowed uses. And in our downtown, the parking is simply based on the square footage of the building regardless of use. We're only talking about parking because it's an SRU. That's the only reason. Or at least talking about parking in this way. I mean, we always talk about parking with the EVs, but it's a straight, it's a straight one per five hundred. And then there's there's even the cash and lieu option, which I think most of you are familiar with. In downtown, you don't even have to build all your parking requirements. You can actually offer the city a cash and lieu for spaces that you're required to do. And then the city goes and acquires and develops parking, you know, with that money.
Commissioner Moline.
So, oh, sorry, Commissioner Deal, were you done?
I'm done. Yep, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Chair. Rob, just and Kim, just continuing with this, a little bit further with this parking analysis, just one that was very helpful from both of you actually to to go over that. And maybe for me and for others, just a clarification. So the zoning on on this property is different than the zoning, I think, than the zoning, for example, across the street. And yet, the, I believe that the the area, both of these areas are going to be covered by that downtown overlay district. To kind of get at what you were, what you were discussing, Rob, was it's not just that commercial core zoned area of downtown, but the downtown overlay district covers a larger area. You want, could you clarify some of that for me?
Sure. Yeah. So that, so when we talk about there's a commercial core and there's a transition area, and those are really design standards. So that's how your building is designed more than the uses of your buildings.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the property across the street actually has the same zoning, which is CC zoning. It's the same
Oh, it does, okay.
list. And I, you know, so I think, so I think the issue here is that we have a use with this event use, which you could have a significantly larger number of people at, you know, using the building than you would a typical office or retail or service use. So that's why we're trying to look at this differently, because the use is so unique compared to all of the use by rights throughout the the district.
It is unique, but the the mechanism we use was to look at what a restaurant bar would generate in terms of occupancy and parking, right?
Yeah. So so the reason we did that is because restaurant uses are used by right, and they're they're probably one of the highest occupancy uses that are used by right. So what we're saying is, you know, you can have an event center, and theoretically, you could fit, I forget what the number was, you know, a few hundred more people in the building than we're setting the occupancy limit on. You know, if you're just following the building code, and that would be a lot of demand for parking in downtown. So how do we limit? How do we limit the demand on parking through this SRU mechanism through a condition? Well, and how do we derive the number that would be appropriate? So we just said, hey, let's use the the highest right by right use. Let's go to our commercial district and see, you know, how many parking spaces would a restaurant require? And then, you know, use a ratio, a standard ratio for these types of uses to say, hey, you know, if you just fit as many people as you could by building code, you can fit, you know, this, this, a very large number of people in here. Let's reduce that occupancy number down through a regulatory note on this document to say, hey, you know, you can't have more than this many people for an event or overall. And therefore, we know that the parking demand is going to be, you know, hopefully reasonably limited. The impact's going to be limited to a standard downtown use.
Okay, yep, that's that's helpful. Thank you.
Great. Any additional questions of staff at this time? Mr. Howe.
Either Rob or Kim, I guess this is questions for you. There's a question on an email about, could we not allow this through an existing mixed-use zone district? Could you just comment on that briefly?
You know, we we looked through all of our existing uses and definitions of all those uses and really felt like there wasn't an existing zoning use or even a similar use to this. And that's why we felt like an ordinance was the best way to do this, to actually create a clear use category. We've had similar requests, I'm going to say, in other parts of the city over time. I think before I started with the city, there was actually an event center proposed in the CTC. And they were looking, and but I think that was in a GDP, a general development plan area where you can kind of customize the zoning. So they were allowed to say, hey, we're going to make this an SRU. Outside of that, we didn't feel like there was an adequate category and wanted to create one. So I, hopefully, that helps answer that.
Yeah, I think that answers my question. And then just a follow-up question. That was more about the First Amendment to the Title seventeen. And now a question about the SRU. So if an additional downtown business wanted to allow a banquet hall use on their property, they would apply for a similar SRU?
That's correct. They would go through the SRU process, and it'd be a public hearing similar to this one.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Deal?
Has there been any official statement from the Downtown Business Association? I know we had one participant earlier in the call, but I'm just curious if there's been anything added to the record from either them or the Chamber of Commerce.
Not that I'm aware of, not that I've seen come through in terms of our email and commenting.
Okay.
Oh, I guess maybe, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Moline, please.
Just one kind of clarification. Just, I I might have been confused. So Rob and Kim, just correct me. So the this property is at the northern edge of our downtown transition overlay. And when you, when you go one block to the north, you've, you're outside of that overlay. But it is, it's, it is, this lot is in that downtown transition zone area. Yep.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions of staff, I would invite the applicant. If you had a recap of what you want to. There we go. Mr. Harton.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right. So this won't be a recap. This is the first time we've gotten to speak on the matter. So I I do have a PowerPoint. If I could share my screen, if that's acceptable to the commission.
Yes, please. Absolutely.
And you should be have the permissions to be able to share. Okay, good.
There we go.
It's working.
Yep.
All right. Excellent. Well, again, thanks for having me. Many of you have seen this project before, maybe multiple times prior to the final construction, and I hope it's met expectations. We're really proud of this building. I think it really does fit in downtown. Barbie's South Street Market, which is in the little house, reconstructed house on the west side of the property is doing quite well, and I think has been received downtown very well. And so filling up this building has been sort of a not as much a challenge as kind of a head-scratcher. We've had lots of different people look at it. Obviously, we did take a look at a hotel use that operator then declined to move forward. And so obviously, there's some typical kinds of uses that could go in here. Offices upstairs. Any kind of commercial use on the main floor could be a restaurant bar, could be anything. Could actually be a restaurant bar that takes two floors with different kinds of events happening on those two floors. So there has been, I think, good interest in leasing here. Caitlin and Dan have negotiated a potential lease here that is contingent on getting the approvals needed from the city. So that's why we're here. I think we started this process in October, November, talking with staff. We really thought that this would fit into a use group that existed downtown because restaurants and bars downtown would have a similar seating capacity that we're talking about. Restaurants and bars downtown also are able to host events. We've got about four. We've got about four venues downtown that can host a two to three hundred person event. There's two or three more that can host a hundred and forty-five, hundred and seventy, as, as they list on their websites. And these are all uses that are by right in the zoning. They don't require an SRU lodges, such as the Elks Club, the Legion are also an approved use downtown. I think we've all attended receptions over at the Elks Club and corporate events and things like that, which you can imagine those events happening there or happening here. So we kind of felt that there was a, you know, maybe it's an in-between kind of a place, but certainly something that was not foreign to the allowable uses that we already have downtown, so as we worked through this with staff, they felt that it would be better to look at this as a special review use. But we didn't have a group for this kind of venue, so they were in the process of trying to create that, the ordinance that's in front of you to create this use group while we were going through the process, so we're a little bit shooting in the dark because we didn't have the code in front of us, because it didn't exist yet, so there is a little bit of urgency, and I appreciate the fact that staff allows these to go through in parallel, given the fact that they believe that's needed. So happy to be here on both of these items tonight. If you've read through all the materials that were submitted, that sort of accumulated over months of working with staff on how to sort of answer the questions that might be asked, and so hopefully most of those are answered in the materials that we've presented and obviously the staff's presentation. I know last time there were a few questions that came up as well as tonight, and I guess I'd like to maybe address a few of those right now. I think Commissioner Deal had asked about capacities of local restaurants, again, even though the seating areas may even be larger than what they can host in an event, certainly the events bases or accommodations that they can offer are sort of equal to or more than what's being proposed here. Obviously, if you can do a three hundred person event at a venue downtown, this venue is going to be restricted to two hundred and fifty-one guests, so again, a little bit different that we're going through this SRU and the others are uses by right. And I think that what staff had explained, the reasoning for that is that this would be a primary use, whereas the restaurants, the primary use is a restaurant or a bar, not the event, the event might be a accessory kind of a use. So given that, trying to fit within the parameters that were presented, Caitlin's business plan really is looking at weddings as being sort of one of the primary uses, obviously corporate events and things like that would happen as well. But if you look at a standard wedding that they're looking at hosting, hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty guests is the average, and that I think is a regional average. Caitlin's been in this business for a while and she's done some research, so she knows her customer base, and that is where she believes the sweet spot is for the events that she's planning on hosting most of the time. We did layouts to see, well, what would fit in here? The plan that you see in front of you is showing a hundred and seventy-eight seats in a banquet setting, to just see, well, what would be sort of the most that you could fit in here if you had a larger event? And certainly, this hundred and seventy-eight would be a larger event than they would normally be hosting, even to the point that the dance floor, we need to, you'd need to remove tables, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but
Yeah, we can see it.
You can, okay, great, this would be the area for the dance floor, which is currently occupied with some tables to get the seat count up. Those would obviously have to be removed to actually function as a dance floor, so it, it's a tight fit for the, the anticipated events to go much over a hundred and fifty guests in the building. If you look upstairs, the actual ceremony for a wedding, for instance, if we want to accommodate about the same number, this is actually, this is a hundred and seventy-eight seats, so that you can see, you know, if, if that is sort of the upper end of the wedding events that might happen here, this is how it fits into the space, and it fits comfortably in the space with area up front for the ceremony, some staging area in back, got a brides room and obviously the restrooms and so forth. So as far as this building fitting the use that Caitlin is planning, it, it's working quite well. And so, the other thing that we look at as architects is what else could happen here if you did have a corporate event? And, you know, Boulder Creek wanted to host their clients and, and their employees for some kind of an event, how many people could actually fit per building code? And so this would be a layout of kind of a lecture-style seating, maxing out a little over three hundred seats. And you can see there are some not-so-good seats in the house, you know, so, so this is really packing them in, and I doubt that somebody would actually do a layout like this and try to get that many people in. And so in talking with staff and with Caitlin and Dan, basically limiting the maximum amount of guests to two hundred and fifty-one would mean you couldn't do this three hundred-seat lectures layout. You'd have to reduce that by about fifty seats per the SRU requirements that are, are being imposed. And Caitlin has, has agreed to that, thinking that she'll be able to accommodate the things that she could anticipate for this. So there's a lot of information in our packet and a lot of information in staff report and the presentation, and I know there's probably confusion as well. I did want to point out, you know, our use by right of a restaurant or bar, how many seats could we fit in there upstairs and downstairs? You know, this gets to about that three fifty for the whole building. And the meeting lodge, which is an allowable use, you could have a lodge seating upstairs and a banquet hall downstairs, or, you know, a bar and a dance floor downstairs, and you could effectively, per the building code, get, you know, over six hundred and fifty people in, in the building, physically in the building. Without going through an SRU, this would be an approved use, an allowable use downtown. Obviously, it'd be a lot of people to imagine in that building, and I doubt that somebody would use it that way, because you would normally have, you know, say your lodge hall upstairs and then your sort of event space not used at the same time, you know, you convene your lodge to the, to the bar after your meeting, and so those same three hundred people could use upstairs and then downstairs. But that kind of gives you an idea of what kind of a maximum capacity. Obviously, if, if this were a dance venue, you could fit that many people in as well per the building code. This was just another standard, the area divided by twenty-one square foot per person. Just to kind of compare that, it's another, I think that's a municipal code calculation. So the point here is that the, there are allowable uses. If this use doesn't go forward, and there were other allowable uses that came forward for the building, it could easily exceed the number of occupants that are anticipated for this use, and those would not go through an SRU process. So I just want to kind of put things in context in terms of what we're doing here tonight, and the limitations that we're already placing on this business, and maybe expressing a little bit of caution about not going overboard with restrictions, just because we've already we're already kind of doing less than would be allowed anyway, so. And again, this is just reviewing how we looked at the parking. As Rob and Kim were pointing out, we really tried to figure out, you know, and with Lisa as well, you know, what is the real impact of, you know, a use by right versus a wedding or some other function? And really, when you think about a wedding using either the upstairs or the downstairs, but typically not both at the same time, and then the, the speakeasy in the basement could be used concurrently with that. So what would be kind of the maximum that we might need? That calculation got us to sixty-one spaces based on the, the standard of one parking space per three seats, which is not a downtown standard, it's not required downtown. This is just a way to calculate what might the demand be, and so how many cars might there be looking for parking spaces? So Caitlin and Dan have done a pretty extensive parking study, which I hope you all had a chance to look at. I think it's instructive. Again, sort of going back to one of the questions about the parking requirement, which has been satisfied with the onsite spaces and a fee in lieu, which has been paid at building permit, with the exception of an occupied basement, because the PUD did not anticipate a bar in the basement, it anticipated kitchen and prep space in the basement, so that would be another fee in lieu that would have to be paid for the additional parking required for the speakeasy. But the, the requirement has been met already in terms of any of the uses that could go in that building, whether it's a restaurant, a lodge, or anything else that's allowed. And so, one thing that we, I don't know how many people were around for all the parking studies that we've done, and I say we because I was involved in these back into the eighties, I believe, and looking for creating parking in and around downtown has always been a goal. You'll remember the parking structure that was proposed, had been proposed several times downtown, it's not happening, but City Council purchased land and, and created parking spaces in the D-Lo area across the railroad tracks. And a lot of us were saying, well, who's ever going to park over there? And I think if you think about driving around downtown, you're going to go to a restaurant, you're not going to go down to Pine Street and out to forty-two and then up forty-two and then over to D-Lo and find that parking lot that's back behind the, the retail strip center there. But if you're an event venue and you can provide instructions to people that here is a convenient place to park, where there is public parking available, and even require it, you know, require that your planners and, you know, the, your patrons know about it and that they, you know, are encouraged to park over there, then we can actually drive some parking into that empty lot. At any given time, the average number of parking spaces over there, if we include some street parking as well, is sixty to eighty-five parking spaces. So conveniently, those available parking spaces kind of meet the actual parking demand for this venue. And again, part of that was paid for with a fee in lieu that this building has paid. So you got to really kind of back up to thirty thousand feet and look at all the things that go into how we park cars downtown, and, and I think this is a really good use of those unutilized parking spaces over there. And then again, this is just, was explaining what Rob and Kim had already explained about backing into those numbers in terms of if it was a restaurant bar, how the CDDSG would calculate fifteen spaces per thousand square foot of floor area. If this were out on McCaslin, then it would require, you know, a hundred and twenty-four parking spaces, which would equate to three hundred and seventy-two people. So that'd be kind of the maximum that you could fit into the, into the building in terms of demand for parking. And again, I don't know about you guys, but in using the CDDSG over the years, I do believe that we have an overparked situation in terms of, we have a lot of asphalt that's unused if you go up and down McCaslin, so this is a very high parking standard. So this is kind of the maximum that we could with staff imagine that demand could be generated from this building. So the SRU really focuses on mitigating the impacts of the use. And so I think that, I think it's face, safe to say that with the requirements that are placed on this SRU already, with the conditions that the applicant is willing to abide by, that this will have substantially less impact than if this were a very successful bar restaurant that maybe had a, you know, open mic night or live music that would play on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then during the week would be open for, you know, normal business hours. Those people, again, aren't going to find that parking lot across the railroad tracks, they're going to find the closest parking space around the building, which unfortunately does tend to leak out into the neighborhood. So I think that this is a good use, and I think that with staff, we've crafted a very thoughtful approach to deal with mitigating the issues, especially parking demand. Again, if this were an office building every day, the people who would be in that office, much like at City Hall, would go to the neighborhoods and park on the street, and that won't be happening with this venue, so I think it definitely is less of an impact. I, I know that Commissioner Krantz had a question about noise last time, and we had addressed that in our application. The SRU actually prohibits outdoor amplified music. And so there are restaurants downtown that have outdoor space and outdoor music is not prohibited. It is simply prohibited after midnight. Although the restaurant or bar can still remain open after midnight, the only restrictions that I'm aware of that come with some SRUs, like the rooftop deck, I think at Waterloo has a restriction, has to do with amplified music, not with closing the venue at, at midnight. So again, this is more restrictive than you'll find with the restaurants that have live music. As far as the, the sound that would emanate from the site, a typical bar or restaurant that is successful and relatively loud is in that eighty to ninety decibel range inside the building. And certainly, this venue would not be exceeding those decibel levels. And so with the construction of the building, again, sound kind of acts like, like heat transfer, it's very similar. And the better we build a building, and every year we build better buildings from an energy standpoint, then the, the more, the tighter they are and the less infiltration of both heat and air and sound. So there's a reduction of sound from the inside to the outside, and based on some really back-of-the-napkin calculations of typical buildings like this, we're estimating that right outside the building, you could be at around sixty to seventy decibels at the maximum, and certainly only thirty to fifty decibels at the lower end, depending on which part of the building you're, you're next to. And then, of course, the further you get away from the building, then sound drops off based on the distance. And so, if you, I think you were all involved, or many were involved with the look at the, the noise ordinance for downtown that council, I think initiated. And the, the city, I'm not sure who it was in the city, but somebody went around and did a sound measurement around downtown, and And they found that the average um, ambient street noise. Um, that evening of May, in May on two thousand seventeen, um, was above sixty-five decibels. Um, now, I didn't really get how far above, but I guess. What I'm saying is that, that already just the restaurants and the bars. Normal allowable uses downtown are already sort of exceeding the sixty-five decibel level. Um, with windows closed, and certainly this building is not going to be above that. Um, so it's not like this, because it's a wedding venue, it's gonna be this huge noise generator. That's so different than you might find at a successful restaurant or bar downtown. So just the points that I think we want to emphasize tonight is that I believe that the um, event venue is less impactful. Than um, a lot of the byright uses that could go in this building. Um, there are restrictions per the SRU, um, that are imposed on other restaurants and bars. Um, they really function very similarly, that includes the hours of operation. Um, no outdoor amplified music. Um, and then a maximum occupancy less than the code would allow. Whereas most of the restaurants are governed by the building and fire codes. Um, the operators of the Simon would be directing event planners and guests to the public parking, which I believe. Will actually get some utilization out of the parking lot that we've developed over there. And they'll also require the larger events to use a shuttle, um, and uh, valet service or, or ride share. And uh, Caitlin's gonna talk a little bit more about that. Um, I think at the last meeting, there was a uh, discussion about, well, why don't we have a development agreement for this? Um, we have development agreements for most new projects that were, when we're building new streets and sewers and water lines. And the city requires the um, owner of the property to put up a um, sort of a bond, really. Um, it's a financial guarantee in the terms of cash or a letter of credit. That the city can call on if that development agreement is violated. In other words, if you don't build a street to standards and they have to rebuild it, or your water line. Um, does not get inspected properly, they can call that, they've got the cash to fix it. Um, so development agreements can be fairly um, onerous, I guess. Um, I'm not aware of any in Lewisville that would regulate a use like this. So this, I think, would be a little bit of uncharted territory. Um, and I believe it's unnecessary for this. I mean, it's really using a, a hammer, a large hammer, maybe a sledgehammer. Um, when you really uh, don't even need a tack hammer for the problems that we might be trying to deal with in the SRU. Um, you really need to look at the, the benefits of this. Um, when you think about who goes to weddings or events that are sponsored by corporations and so forth. You're bringing people downtown, um, who may never set foot in downtown Lewisville. Um, and the more people that we can introduce to Lewisville, um, especially downtown. Then I think the more successful over time, the businesses are going to be. Because it's a, we have an exposure issue, always have downtown, that's why the street fair was invented. Um, to really introduce people to what we've got here. And I think this is certainly something that will do that, and it'll be a great benefit for downtown. Um, so just in, in closing, there's um, I believe two proposed conditions of approval. Um, one formally in the uh, um, packet. Uh, that I think is in the resolution, and then another one that is added uh, by staff, which we're in agreement with. Um, so reception hall shall not operate past twelve AM, midnight. And that the occupancy is going to be limited uh, to two fifty-one persons per event. With the total occupancy in the building limited to three seventy-two. Um, so those are acceptable to the applicant, and I would um. I, I'll state that I believe these are the things that we need to control. Uh, any um, mitigation uh, aspects to this project that the SRU is intended to do, so. That's what I have, I'm happy to answer questions either now or after Caitlin's presentation.
Thank you very much, um, why don't we go ahead and ask uh, uh, Ms. Elvendall to make a presentation?
All right, I will stop sharing. So we can see Caitlin, where are you?
Right here, can everybody hear me?
There you are.
Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Hello, thank you for having us, and my name's Caitlin Elvendall. I will be responsible for wedding and event operations at the nine fifty-seven Main Street location. And to give you a little bit of background, I've worked in and around Boulder County in the wedding and event industry over the last five years. I've experienced working as a catering sales manager, a coordinator and a facilities manager. This has allowed me to see events through the eyes of different vendors and positions. And we are really excited about this event space and this project. I would love to quickly explain a few things that I think there have been some question marks around. And so the primary types of events that we see ourselves hosting are weddings, so ceremonies and receptions. As well as corporate events, holiday parties, launch parties. Larger meetings for companies that no longer have space to gather their whole team. As well as nonprofit events, fundraisers, celebrations, silent auctions, things of that nature. We do see the nine fifty-seven Main Street building as a very versatile space, and so we also have a vision to host other events. We hope to host a lot of community events throughout the year. These would be events open to all community members, community workshops like a floral design, DIY signage. Live screen, screen printing, financial workshops, uh, graduation prom, holiday pop-up markets. Uh, another thing, I know there were some questions on a T-shirt show. So this would be a T-shirt design exhibition with Colorado themed T-shirts from different local artists. Partnering with a local screen printer to print this Colorado themed designs and showcase them to the community. And we also believe that this space is perfect for smaller formal meetings, city council, board of directors. Birthday parties, bridal showers, baby showers, anniversary parties, art shows. And with the way the space is laid out, we're really excited to be a space for private events, as well as a great community gathering space. For all kinds of events and celebrations. And I would love to quickly overview our shuttle and valet policies. Our policies will encourage a shuttle service, valet or paid ride share. For events with over a hundred and seventy-five guests taking place on a Friday or Saturday evening. And event hosts will hire an outside company to render these services. Because we won't be providing these services in-house, that means there won't be any vehicles permanently parked downtown, um, or on the premises. Uh, we know that for our business to be successful, we need limitations to work for us, for our guests, for the city and the surrounding neighborhood. So we're really hoping that we can land there, and our desire is absolutely to be a pleasant and responsible neighbor. We're really excited to partner with a long list of local businesses such as caterers, florists. Other restaurants downtown for rehearsal dinners and after-parties. And we believe this is a great use for this space in downtown Lewisville and hope to complement and support the existing businesses. And then Dan was gonna present really quick as well.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, yeah, good evening, um, uh, Caitlin uh, did a great job there, and so I'll just be super brief. Um, first, just wanted to thank the commissioners and the staff for your work and consideration on this project.
If we can ask you to.
I'm Dan Kelly, and I'll be in charge of the finance and back office and whatever other support um, the, the project needs.
It's all right to interrupt, can we?
Just look forward to becoming a member of the downtown Lewisville unit, uh, business community, and um, yeah.
Sorry, to, to begin with, can you introduce yourself, name and address, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think he has a speaker.
So, okay. Uh, Ms. Elvendall, maybe you can give us Dan's name and address, well, you did mention Dan Kelly, we've got that straight. But, okay. All right, is there anybody else from the?
We're, Dan Kelly and his address.
Yeah.
It's six seven one Amelia Lane in Lafayette.
Great.
I don't know this, yeah, and do you want my address as well?
Yeah, please.
It's one two two nine Tyler Place in Erie.
Great, thank you very much, is there anybody else on the applicant team to present? No?
I don't believe so.
Okay, great, thank you very much, I would open it up then for commissioner questions of the applicant. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, just for clarity, um, and uh, you know, thank you for the presentation and the, the interest, for sure. Um, just wanna make sure we understand all the, all the details. In terms of the parking mitigation strategies, what's kind of offered and available to a wedding or, or an event versus required?
Yeah, so our initial um, plan was to require a shuttle. And then based on staff recommendations of limiting occupancy, and, and their suggestion of that being. A better way to go about it, we're hoping that that is the requirements. And outside of that, we'll just strongly encourage it for those larger events.
Okay. Thank you.
Guess, sorry, I would like to add to that, I, when people are hosting a private event, they want it to go smoothly. So when they come in and tour the space and we explain, hey, your event's gonna be way more. Is smooth from the get-go, if you hire a shuttle service, we're trusting that that is going to make a difference in people's decision there.
Thank you.
Additional commissioner questions of the applicant, Christian Howe.
Hi, uh, Caitlin, I guess this would be directed to you, or maybe uh, Eric. Do you know, you mentioned the D-Lo downtown uh, parking lot. Do you know how many spaces that, that, you may not know this, maybe a better question for the planning department. You know how many spaces, spaces that actually has?
I believe it's eighty-two.
Okay.
Am I right? I, there's a day that I knew exactly, like the back of my hand, but I, I believe it's eighty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, uh, Commissioner Ossman?
Thanks, um, yeah, I think this question piggybacks on the question about parking. And um, during Eric's presentation, you mentioned the capacity that's available on the east side of the tracks. And um, I know that in the parking study, you were looking at various different spaces. Both on the east side and also in the um, streets surrounding this property. The question is, given the amount of capacity that's on the east side, which is very compelling, a lot of parking capacity. How, how are you able to ensure that the patrons will use that space? And park on that side versus the other side that has limited capacity?
Uh, absolutely, so we looked at all of these parking spaces, just because they were public and wanted to get an idea of. You know, what the few random people who did drive through downtown first and parked by the library, what would be available there? And, and I did glance back quickly between the Dello lot and the south, south street parking. Um, on the east side of the track, there's ninety-six spots total. And the Dello lot has sixty-seven, and then that uh, south street portion has twenty-nine. And so ninety-nine point nine percent of wedding events will have a wedding website. That's where they're gonna post their registry, other things they have going on that weekend. So we'll encourage that uh, couples post that information there. There will be travel suggestions for hotel blocks, and so it would really make sense to have that there. We also will suggest putting it on their invitation, that there are parking instructions on their website, on their event website.
Any additional questions from commission? All right, um, thank you all very much, um, seeing none of this.
I'm so sorry.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, so um, if I was understanding Mr. Hartnoff's presentation, right? Um, when he was saying that a development agreement, was that the word would go um, kind of beyond what is usually required? Was that in reference to making a formal agreement about how the parking would be handled?
Uh, yeah, the, the, um, at least as. I understand what was being proposed, a development agreement. You, you know, you have an SRU, and, and that's the vehicle that is described in the, the municipal code. For dealing with special uses like this. And there are penalties and things that can happen if somebody violates the terms of the SRU. So if Caitlin, you know, is um, you know, too noisy and has outdoor music. And, you know, violates some of those conditions, then there are things the city can do. Um, and I think a few of the commissioners, a couple of commissioners had asked, well, how do we enforce that? And um, my answer is you enforce it like you do any other SRU that we have in town. Um, but the uh, the possibility of a development agreement came up. And I believe Rob addressed that last time, and I think he's got um, some more information on that as well.
So I, I just wanted to add that, you know, whether it's a development agreement or it is verbiage on the SRU document. The point is, is that we want to have an enforceable mechanism. So if the commission wants to have, if the commission wants to rely on shuttle service and Uber service. The city staff needs to be able to enforce that. So just stating it in a public meeting doesn't mean it's a regulatory requirement. It needs to be on the SRU document, which we could do. I mean, if we're, if we don't want to do it in a development agreement, we want, we can write it into the SRU document. And that's still a recorded document that runs with the land and it's regulatory and enforceable. So I think the point is, is that whatever we're gonna rely on to ensure that, you know, parking, potential parking. Um, you know, impacts onto downtown are mitigated, which is a valid purpose of an SRU. We just want to make sure that it's enforceable and regulatory. So hopefully that helps clarify, a-again, we have subdivision improvement agreements, which are often infrastructure related. But from time to time, the city does have development agreements that put certain conditions or requirements on development. That are outside of public infrastructure. Um, we've never done one, to my knowledge, specifically related to parking. But certainly the city does infrastructure agreements and then development agreements that have certain conditions on developments. So it's a little bit of semantics how we craft it, I just want to make sure it's regulatory.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yeah, I mean, that, that really helps me a lot and partially answers my question. But I'm trying to make the connection between what Mr. Hart draft, I can't, sorry if I pronounce your name wrong.
Eric.
Um, Eric, thank you, um. Said about that not being a tip, not being required for restaurants. And I'm just trying to understand why it might be necessary or might not be necessary to add. For uh, for this special review use. Just, do you understand what my question is? How is this, I, I'm trying to understand why, um, it sounded like Eric was saying this might not really be. Necessary if we don't require it of other businesses, so why, why would we potentially require it for this use?
So, so an event space is different than a typical downtown business. It, it could very likely have a much higher occupancy than a standard downtown business. That's why we put, so staff isn't saying, hey, we need a development agreement, um, we're in support of the occupancy limit. It's actually on the SRU, we fill that with the occupancy limit. Um, there is a reasonable limit on the impact of parking. Um, the development agreement concept got brought up at the last meeting. Because if there's concern that that occupancy limit isn't enough, but we want this flexibility to go up and down. Um, you know, that's just a mechanism that we could explore and see if we can get comfortable with some type of agreement, we haven't flushed it out. But if, if the commission's comfortable with the occupancy limit as a mechanism, we really don't need to do anything else.
And Mr. Hartram, if you had your hand raised.
I, Rob did a great job of saying what I was just gonna say, which is. We came to this occupancy limit as the throttle. Um, so that it really wouldn't, the event space wouldn't exceed other types of things like restaurants or other businesses. That would be typical in a building like this, which is how we came up with those parking numbers, et cetera, so.
Good, thank you, any additional question, Commissioner Deal?
Maybe just on this, this point of the, you know, the, the hall being equivalent to a restaurant. Um, and obviously that being a right, right, uh, by use. What we would be looking at though, and feel free to comment on this, Eric or, or the team. Um, is, you know, potentially every Saturday in the summer, where you've got an event, a wedding. With, you know, three hundred and seventy two occupants, one hundred and twenty four. Parking spots occupied during those kind of peak. Saturday probably would be. So I mean, it is a little bit different than a restaurant, which, you know, I think any restaurateur would love to have that type of commitment to have that customer base kind of. You know. At that point in time. So I guess I'm just saying, I think I think it's a little bit different than a a restaurant. And love for you to hear you comment on that.
I'd like to address that. Again, that that's the upper limit that was set just to put some guardrails around this so that it wouldn't exceed. Something that could happen by right that could be likely to happen in terms of number of vehicles that would need to be accommodated. And again, I might remind you that Caitlyn's average wedding is one hundred and twenty five to one hundred and fifty. We've accommodated about one hundred and eighty guests, as you saw those layouts, which equates to about sixty vehicles. So about half of what you were describing in terms of it's not one hundred and twenty four cars every Saturday. More than likely, it'll be sixty or less. And then you add in valet and and shuttle and and ride share and so forth, and that number comes down. And the biggest difference is that even if it's sixty in a restaurant. And they they're they're not any better than that. Those people are definitely parking downtown and they're not going to know about the D low lot. Nobody knows about the D low lot, except Caitlyn's patrons will know about the D low lot. And that's the beauty of this as opposed to a standard restaurant, which they'll just find places in the neighborhood or, you know, what they can find on the street. So.
Commissioner Howe.
As I think he as I'm trying to think through solutions to this, and Caitlin, maybe this is a question for you. Eric alluded to maybe one hundred and eighty being your occupancy for a wedding. Or a banquet. Would this project? Entertain a lower maximum capacity than two hundred and fifty one?
It it from our perspective, it seems like going from the seven hundred maximum occupancy down to the three seventy two. Down to the two fifty one for an event feels very sufficient to us, so we're really hoping to land there.
Mr. Kelly.
Oh. Can I? Um, can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hartrums.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. The other thing that I just wanted to add in is that if we did have a corporate event. And they wanted to set up that lecture hall that I showed you, they wouldn't be able to fill the space as it is at two fifty. They're they're going to be restricted. And so, you know, that that's kind of the most we could ever imagine in there. And you restrict that even more than you're going to restrict the types of businesses or, you know, events that might actually be able to be served there. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add one thing that hasn't really been highlighted is the convenience of the Dello lot to this particular facility in downtown. It's just a short, quick walk up South Street under the railroad tracks. It's kind of a nice walk. The buildings up through there are all active and there's things going on and. It it's, I think it's going to be very, very appealing for the wedding guests and the event guests to park down there. And it's going to be our business will be easily promote and direct people to that area to do that and fill that. Unused capacity that the city currently has.
Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, one more question for the for the application applicant team. I guess the the building is obviously done, and I agree it is a very aesthetically pleasing building. But how much more? Investment is needed to basically get it ready to open? If you can answer that.
Well, we're. Like to keep as much confidential on that end as we could. But there is significant investment.
Still.
It's it's probably going to be.
You could say significant if it's just significant.
That's very significant. Yeah, we're we're.
Okay.
We're very close to to seven digits, if not over seven digits.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Any additional questions of the applicant at this time? Seeing none, then I will move into public comment and open up public comment portion of the hearing. Will ask all people to limit themselves to three minutes. We will be using a timer on screen. And if you begin in stating your name and address with your comments. And. I'll pull up. So I see we have a couple of hands raised. And I believe it's a Katie McCoy.
Hi, good evening. Nine seven seven Arapaho Circle. I lived across the street from Rob. I just want to comment, the event center building is absolutely lovely. And as a wedding venue and weddings happen mostly during the warm months. I'm wondering how this is going to affect the street fair. Because of parking, there have been so many complaints about parking during the summer for the street fair. So this parking strategy for the event center. I understand we want everybody who's going to the event center to park in D low. But if I were invited to a wedding at this center, there's no way I would park in D low. I would just find street parking. And I think a lot of my neighbors, if we still had a home and we live there, we would do the same. So I'm just wondering if this event center is going to eliminate the street fair during the summer. And. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Oberholzer.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mr. I don't call myself Mr. Very often Mark Oberholzer, two two four Hoover Avenue. Vice President of the DBA, and I will be speaking on behalf of the DBA today. As well as speaking as the owner of Tilt Pinball and the Louisville Underground. So from the Louisville Underground's perspective, just briefly on that, you know, we may have some overlapping sort of customer base, but. I still welcome them as a great compliment to what we offer in downtown. So I certainly support them in that. Speaking on behalf of the DBA. I we find we did discuss this at our last meeting. We find this to be an incredibly valuable addition to downtown. A lot of the items Eric mentioned as far as new visitors coming downtown, a vibrant downtown, just, you know, the people coming out of there and going to other places around. We just think would be incredibly valuable to downtown and would and as an organization would officially support this project. I have a little bit of concern. Over somewhat of the arbitrary nature of some of this. It seems as though, you know, with Eric's points on the maximum occupancy of certain use by rights. Putting in some of these restrictions does seem a little bit arbitrary. I think it's very noble of Caitlin and Dan to agree to the lower occupancy level. And I think as a result of that, to consider adding additional restrictions. Would be not real beneficial to their business, not beneficial to downtown. For example, saying we've limited the occupancy to help with parking, but oh, you're also going to need to require. A shuttle service seems a little unfair, especially given to the fact that they have already paid a fee in lieu. And so if you're paying a fee in lieu and then also having to pay for a shuttle service seems a little bit like double dipping on the city's parts. You know, perhaps the fee in lieu could pay for the the shuttle service. And. And it also feels a little bit like they are being punished just because they're late to the party. They're one of the, you know, they're obviously the newest event space to be open in town. The newest place to be open in town that would have some people in it. And so therefore they're getting saddled with a lot of these restrictions. I think that Caitlin's point that the people that her customers are going to want to have this shuttle service makes a lot of sense. And the fact that they do have a communication with these people in advance, I think is a is a huge point. And I don't think putting actual restrictions beyond that makes any sense. The midnight cutoff to me also feels a little bit arbitrary. Nobody else has that same restriction, and I don't see how that would really apply here. And I think those were my main points. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. At this time, I do not see any other raised hands. Double check the staff to confirm that with me if you would, but.
That's correct. I don't see any other hands raised.
All right. Then I would entertain an applicant response and closing statement.
I'll give it to Caitlin for her final thoughts. I just. I think we've we've worked hard on this with staff and I feel like we've come to a good place that's responsible for the neighborhood and for downtown. So I'm really excited to see this happen because it is different. It's not going to be just another restaurant. So Caitlin.
Yeah, I guess to close up our side of things. And we've been looking for the right space to do this for about three years now. And and we're really, really excited about this space. We're really excited about the downtown Louisville community. So thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration and just know that we're really excited to hopefully be a part of the community.
Thank you. Any additional questions of the applicant from commission? All right. Thank you all very much. Moving on, then a staff response and closing statement.
Unless Rob has anything else, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions of staff from the commission before we move into deliberations? All right, seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Moline.
I'm I'm willing to begin, but happy if somebody else would rather to. This I a couple, just a couple of points right off the bat. I really this, this, this project appears to be yet another example of. The the city staff and an applicant working together to find a solution to this. I really, as always, appreciate both parties when we work together. And I think I I'm I'm at a place where this feels like we're, we found a good result for this. I I think this is a. I really appreciate the building that's been there. And I think looking for creative ways to activate the space, which is what the applicant's doing here. I I'm appreciative of that effort. I will say this, too. The the I think it's very appropriate for us to, as a plant, as planning commission, to deliberate long and hard about some of these issues. There were a number of deep concerns that were raised by people on this particular, from the community on on this particular item. And so I think I think it's very appropriate for us to explore ways of of. Trying to minimize those kinds of impacts. So, you know, I I think we're, and I think the applicant and city staff have 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 hit the right balance here. So I I. See myself in support of of kind of both of the items. I think that this, the that we need a new use group here. This isn't a restaurant and a bar. It's a different thing. And I really feel I'm in agreement with staff on that, that we need this new use group. But then I also really support the this SRU application as well. So that's kind of a summary of where I'm at at this point.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moline. Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, I'm in an agreement in general with Commissioner Moline. I think it the application meets certainly for the criteria for approval, special review approval. The one, obviously, I think we're all focused in on is the the issue of parking. And I think that's the the crux of this whole thing. I mean, the the all the other four criteria hit and it, you know, would would bring a lot of energy vitality to downtown. The only concern, which obviously I voiced earlier, is, you know, with this, the spiky nature of a wedding event. On Saturdays in the summer or, you know, through other parts of the year. The concern is that, you know, we're we're going to. You know, that that those parking spaces are going to go to wedding and event guests. And then the rest of the downtown businesses would suffer because of that. So but, you know, the the DBA, it sounds like is in support. So I'm a little bit deferential to to their view. And if they don't think that there's going to be impacts to to other businesses. Or, you know, the the street fair, things of that nature, then, you know, I probably be more inclined to support.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, I I'd like just to echo what the other commissioners have said. Thank you for the proposal and the presentation and thanks for working through this with staff with the applicant. I most of my heart goes out to this project and wanting to enable a successful lease and occupancy. I think this will bring a lot of economic stability and that. Fills a lot of the criteria for the special reviews. When I break it up into the two, two things that we're doing here, I don't have any problem with amending the title seventeen of the municipal code. I think this kind of an option gives downtown some flexibility. The question that I have is whether this SRU for the banquet hall in this particular use is is appropriate. And I would just cite the approval criteria on number four. Which says the external effects of the proposal are controlled, considering compatibility of land use, movement or congestion of traffic. Sixty vehicles sounds like a lot to me when I'm driving downtown Louisville. Looking for a parking spot. You know, I just want one open spot, let alone sixty vehicles competing for that. The reality is that on nights with these proposed events, despite the option of offsite parking, I think there'll be much more competition. For curbside parking in downtown Louisville. And I think this is a very beneficial thing for downtown. So I see the benefits of the the economic benefits. But when I look five or 10 years down the road. I think we're moving further and further away from. Maybe maybe community residents enjoying downtown to outside residents enjoying downtown. And I don't know if that's true or not, but it's a potential for for less and less benefits and and accessibility to existing citizens of Louisville. So I guess I'm really split. I'm eager to hear what everybody else has to say. But knowing that D low may not have that many. Options for parking. On on a Friday or Saturday night, I don't know if we could service sixty vehicles in the D low parking when everybody else is trying to get parking there, too. So at this point, I'm I'd love to say yes, but I just think like we're trying to fit a square peg into a a round hole. This wasn't the intent of the original P U V.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Grants. But you are, you're still muted. There we go.
Sorry about that. Um, it occurs to me that it wouldn't be very hard, just now occurred to me when. Commissioner Howe was saying this, that it wouldn't be too hard to direct parking to the lots that are across the street from D low. By the ball fields. As well. So I mean, I don't, I just feel like as a resident. Just in response to what you're saying, as a resident, I'm willing to. I wouldn't see why I wouldn't be willing to park over there and just walk across the street now that there's a crosswalk. It's a little bit further, but. It's definitely walkable to downtown. But.
Any additional comments? Commissioner Osterman?
Yeah, thank you. Just trying to get off mute here. So I think that this is a really exciting project. I I think that it adds a new use case for the downtown area. And I I agree with Commissioner comments thus far. I think that having this kind of business will bring a lot of investment and economic vitality for our downtown areas. So with that in mind. So with that in mind, I'm, I'm supportive of this application. But I would say that, kind of echoing some of Commissioner Howe's concerns about the parking, criteria number four. I, I do have some hesitations, although I also think that the evidence that was presented today by the applicants and the in-depth parking study that was conducted, I, I am reassured by the evidence and some of the measures that they have stated that they'll be taking to try to mitigate the impact. And although this type of use case will have some very peak numbers in terms of utilization and customers. I, I do think that with this particular type of model, it is, it is different from a restaurant. And so the fact that there will be shuttle service or that there will be alternatives, I do think that that, that's compelling in terms of thinking about how the parking impact can be mitigated. So I, I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards being supportive of this application without adding additional restrictions, especially given the applicant's comments about how additional restrictions would be very onerous for them. So yeah, I, that's my position for now.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Osterman. I also had concerns about parking and, and then it's interesting that there are some parallels between what's allowed as a use by right in the restaurant setting, and then also some very real differences. I do think the applicant has both shown kind of their, their target market in agreeing to these lower numbers, that they really are not trying to pack the place as tightly as possible as it might otherwise be allowed to. And having those numbers within this are an interesting way to, to do that. I also think that, that the businesses, right, as represented by DBA, have spoken in saying that they are in support of it also. So when we think about parking, we are thinking about primarily parking for people to get to the businesses that are downtown. So when the businesses say that they're not concerned about it, then that's a pretty loud voice as to what we're trying to be concerned with at that point in time. I think sound has also been addressed, is a concern, has been addressed. And again, in this situation, when we look at, well, how does it compare to what it could be as used by right as a restaurant? Well, I think that's been well addressed at that point in time. So I find myself in favor of it at this point. Commissioner Moline, looks like you wanted to chime in with something.
You know, I was just, based on the, the parking discussion that several of, of you all had. And I, and I really appreciate this, this part of our deliberation and discussion this evening. And I think I just wanted to add that one of the things that was helpful for me in consideration was some of the staff comments about the fact that this is, that this is downtown. And one of the things that we want to, to do with downtown is we, and I guess challenges around just creating a whole bunch of surface parking downtown. That, that really isn't the, wouldn't be consistent in some ways with the image that we want to see in downtown. And so we, part of living or part of being in downtown is having parking that, that can spill outside a little bit of this commercial area, but still be within the downtown kind of orbit, I guess. And it was helpful for me to hear that discussion from staff today and it makes me more comfortable with the application.
Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, I think part of the challenge is that we're all trying to predict what this is going to look like a year from now, two years from now, five years from now. Because obviously the, this approval, you know, is, is basically permanent, as far as I can tell, right? And that's, you know, I was thinking to myself, is there a way to kind of enshrine a point in time where we would kind of do a check-in to say, how are things going? And if parking two years from now is a complete disaster in the summer, and that's obviously, you know, a contributor to that is the new event center banquet hall. Is there then an opportunity to maybe require shuttling or require some other mitigation strategy versus today? It's just, they're going to be recommendations. And I do agree with the applicant that people that pay a lot of money for a wedding are going to want their guests to have a good experience. So they're going to tell them the best way to, to park. But again, we're all trying to predict how this is going to affect downtown. That's kind of where I was going with, is this, is this ready to go? Or is there a significant investment to be made? Because it's not fair to the applicant to say, we want to put a, you know, a check-in in three years. If they've obviously going to be making a large financial commitment. So I don't know what others' thoughts are on that.
Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with you, Commissioner Deal, that it's hard to know. I just, I guess since I've been here since 2002, well, 2002 is pretty easy to find a parking spot downtown. And it's changed a lot. And I guess that's the direction that we all have to think about. And if this is, when this goes to city council, they have to think about that too. The architect Eric mentioned Elks and some other areas that do these. But of course, Elks has their own parking lot too. And, and maybe long-term concerns with this are out of our scope right now. And maybe that would be to limit, limit parking times, you know, maybe you limit parking times to one and a half or two hours or what, what you saw the average of the restaurant turnover would be. And I think that's a difference with this proposal is that you have people that are parking for potentially from 5:30 till 12, whereas you have more of a revolving attendance for restaurants where there's openings in the parking spots. It, it seems to me like down the road, other, other places may be applying for this SRU as well. And as we've seen with the music, we tend to follow protocol. And if one place has an ability to accept and pass an SRU, then so will others down the road.
I'd also note that, right, DBA has been the sponsor of street fair. And so again, there, if we're concerned about that perspective, I think they've represented their thoughts on that perspective when it comes to parking. Over the years, yeah, we have seen changes in parking. It's a point where now we do have some parking spaces that have limited tenure for people to park, which was new. There's also a potential that the, the residential neighbors have permit parking. That, that's another option that has been discussed at different times in the past to ensure that the, the residential areas are not overrun by others coming to visit. So Commissioner Krantz.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, um, I'm starting to feel it's coming together in my mind. It is a relatively new commissioner. I hope you don't mind. Oh my gosh, I, I might have to close my door. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Sorry about the background noise. Um, yeah, it's kind of coming, it's kind of coming together for me because of, I'm going to have to close my door. I'm so sorry about that.
No problem. Go ahead. You can take care of that.
It's like the moment, everything gets loud the moment I unmute. I was, I was just thinking that I didn't get a chance to say earlier, I was just kind of, ideas were popping in my head. But I really do like this idea for downtown. And I also wanted to add that I really appreciated the applicant addressing the noise issue. And that really made a lot of sense. That was one of my concerns before. And I, I do think it makes, I understand and it makes sense to have a, to create a new use and to put that ordinance in place. And then the last question that I think we're all grappling with is still, do we need to do anything additional to ensure that, that there will be enough parking? And I was thinking, well, the development agreement makes sense because I don't understand how, how onerous that would be for the applicant. And then I, I realized as we're looking into the futures, there's other ways that we would, without a development agreement, that we would be, if parking becomes a problem in the future by restricting parking, it would, it would, it would force the applicant or for its future users to institute more methods to reduce single occupancy vehicles, to reduce their traffic, because there would just be less parking. So if we, we would have the option, not within the scope of this decision, but we would still have the option later to deal with it by making restricted spaces at D-Lo for certain uses, to make sure the restaurants that are there have the spaces that they need. You know, we could have the option of encouraging people, you know, promoting people through our transportation management plan to walk across the street to the other parking lots and to encourage people to carpool. And if we, you know, if we had something so simple as, you know, a police car like we have at the street fair, we would reduce a lot of people driving after drinking. And I think that just external pressures will make them, could, could solve all these issues without a development agreement in the future, or if, if they were necessary.
And I would agree with you on that as well, Commissioner Krantz. It, it's, it's in the venue's best interest too, to avoid, in, in this day and age of online world, to avoid getting reputation for having a parking problem. So I do think there are some other hidden pressures perhaps that we don't necessarily see that will help alleviate some of it going forward. And, you know, having been to weddings, yeah. You know, after you get through all, all the hubbub, you got to know where you're going. So you, you end up, you know, printing out that PDF of where you're going so that you can transfer it to, into your phone at the right time or something. So I, I do think that that will help and actually bring utilization to that public parking lot on the other side of the tracks, which is a short walk underneath the tracks from there. So.
I think the most compelling statement I've heard chair is, is the, the fact that the DBA is in support and the DBA supports the street fair. And, you know, I think all, at least my concern has been parking for the rest of the downtown businesses. So if, frankly, if, if they're on board, I think, you know, it's not, not really, you know, my, my view to try and insert, you know, parking as an issue if they don't think it's an issue, if that makes sense. I guess I would ask the city council to, to, to push on that a little bit and make sure we have, you know, true representation in terms of what the downtown businesses are, you know, truly in agreement with this. And with that, I think I'm, I'm in support of the, the application proposal.
Great. Thank you all. Anybody feeling like we need to have any additional discussion at this point? Otherwise I would entertain a motion.
Just a point of, of order, Chairman, do we need to do two motions? One for the ordinance for the amendment of the title and then another one for the SRU?
Yeah, if we do the SRU first, I believe the, so it's resolution number four, series 2022. Uh, no, yes.
Yeah, I will, I will go ahead and make, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number four, series 2022, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending title 17 of the Louisville municipal code to establish a banquet or reception hall use group and criteria for consideration of banquet or reception halls as a special review use in specified zone districts.
My second.
Thank you. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Mr. Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Mr. Osterman?
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion carries and another motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number five, series 2022, a resolution recommending approval of a request for a special review use to allow for the use group banquet or reception hall for the property at 957 Main Street.
I will, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Moline, Commissioner Moline. And with that, a roll call vote please.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Moline?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Mr. Osterman?
Yeah.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes.
Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Motion carries. Appreciate the applicant's time and that we had to carry it over to this month. We wish you best of luck and next stop is City Hall.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night. All right then, we will now move to planning commission comments. This is kind of the open, open mic for commissioners. If there's something you want to speak to, any issues that were happening? Commissioner Moline.
I just wanted, it sounds like we might be moving towards in-person meetings. And I just wanted to, it looks like Rob might, might be wanting to speak on that. So I'd love to hear a little bit more about, about that. And then I just had a quick question, like, are they going to be hybrid? Like, are, are people, yeah, so just wondering how that's going to work.
So yes, we are planning in-person meetings for your next meeting, April 14. We do, we have, you know, installed the technology to do hybrid meetings. I think there's a policy question if that's what, I think everybody's going to follow what the city council wants to do. So I believe that's the intent, you know, we have the ability to do hybrid meetings. So that's what I'd expect on April 14th unless something changes from a policy standpoint for city council. So then, to be clear, that's hybrid for the attendees. There's still an expectation that all of the commissioners and staff would attend in person and applicants.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Moline. Any other commissioner comments?
Oh, I have a question for maybe Rob. This would be appropriate for you. I, can you update us on the Redtail Ridge? And the reason I bring that up is just because I know that that's still in circulation and I want to make sure I don't comment on it if we're still going to be maybe deliberating on that at some point. Will we be deliberating it on some points?
Sure, yeah. So the Redtail Ridge General Development Plan, so there is the election that is scheduled for next month. And there won't be any further deliberation on that application. So that is what, what's before the voters is if you vote yes, you're approving the ordinance that would approve the Redtail Ridge General Development Plan, no would be a no vote on that ordinance. So it never went into effect. It's, it's now up to the voters on whether that general development plan gets approved. So no, that, that could not come back to the planning commission. That would be the conclusion of that application. I do want to mention though, that there is a final subdivision plat submitted for that property, which is a quasi judicial matter. So there, there are very distinct issues, but with the, the subdivision plat, you will be, you know, reviewing compliance with the zoning or whatever general development plan they are plating and developing under. So just a small distinction, there is an active land use case on that property, but it's not the general development plan.
And so as citizens, are we, are, I mean, this is kind of a tricky situation. Are we okay to vote on that referendum or are we discouraged from voting on that?
You can vote, you can vote on the referendum, absolutely. You know, you have the right to participate in that and vote on that. I, you know, I think, I would just recommend being cautious about talking to the public. You know, you have, you have all kinds of legal rights related to the GDP and the election now that it's gone past. But you will be making a decision on the property, you know, based on an application for the plat. And, and that will be applying the zoning, whatever zoning is in effect. So just, if it's, if you're not sure, it's better just to not have an in-depth, you know, pro con conversation about the development because you'll be ruling on the plat.
All right. Thanks for that clarification.
Any additional commissioner comments? Seeing none, I'd invite staff comments.
I would just ask, so we, we got through quite a bit of the quasi judicial training. I know Kathleen would be very happy to come back and spend some more time with us. We can certainly try to do an hour and, you know, before the meeting in April or whenever it worked for people's schedules. So maybe I'll just take a quick poll with, you know, would the commission like us to arrange some more time with Kathleen? And then we can send out a doodle poll or something or just an email. And then we can send out a doodle poll or something or just an email to see what date works best for people.
It was very helpful for me.
And I would just say, we, I I would, it would be great if she could make that PowerPoint available to us somehow, if that's possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, in fact, we can send that to you now. We'll send that to you tomorrow. And then.
I guess a question, Rob, do you know how how far along she was, close to the end? It seemed like she was getting pretty close to the end.
I'm not sure. I think she was pretty close to the end, though, of the presentation. But we really didn't have time for discussion or, you know, questions.
Gotcha.
So we could do a whole hour just to be safe next time, or we could do a half hour before the meeting, whatever everybody think, everybody would like.
Great, yeah, no, I think I think we definitely need to revisit it. So thank you, yes.
Okay, so maybe we'll, we'll send out an email just asking for availability at 5:30 before, you know, one of our upcoming regular meetings and then make sure it works for Kathleen's schedule as well.
And this will be, this will be an in-person meeting then, so that changes the dynamic a little bit.
And then other, other than that, staff doesn't really have any comments. We've got, you know, a few pending applications that could come forward at next month's meeting. It's like a couple of potential PUDs and PUD amendments.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it then. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. And we will, it sounds like we'll be meeting in virtually again in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah. Oh, you know, and I I just thought of one other thing that we didn't put on the menu. There was some, you know, with all of the Marshall Fire Recovery, you know, we're happy to give some up. It's not, you know, the planning commission isn't really reviewing anything, but it is of pretty broad interest to the, and we're happy to maybe provide some updates on our processes or anything else that you'd like. I I would mention that, you know, that the zoning ordinance that you reviewed, that, I'm sorry, the administrative authority ordinance for zoning that you all reviewed and recommended to council was passed on emergency ordinance. Staff did issue a series of summaries to provide clarification, so those are all published. You know, we have, we're, we, in fact, tonight, the city manager and Lisa Ritchie met with neighborhood captains from all the neighborhoods that were, that assigned captains to start some additional community engagement. We've been doing community engagement. So that's, that's dialogue is happening, so we can hear more from the different neighborhoods on how we could be more helpful. We've launched a new, two new websites with hopefully more concise and easier to access information. There's a general Marshall Fire Recovery website. And I think just yesterday, I think there's a new building department specific website. And we're still developing some materials. So we're getting a lot of feedback about communication. The private property debris removal is certainly a hot topic with the lawsuit that has been filed. So I know that's of keen interest to a lot of people, you know, who are, you know, looking to rebuild and get their lots cleared. So we're hoping there's some relief from that lawsuit. I think it's on the 18th of this month is the first court hearing. So that's kind of high level. We're happy to answer any questions about any of those, you know, anything that's happening with the recovery.
Just from my perspective, you guys are, you're doing awesome. So thank you for all your, all your work and efforts.
Absolutely. Sorry, now, now we're really done.
Now we have a motion to adjourn. How about a second?
Okay.
Thank you. We have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Have a good week.
Thanks, everyone. See ya.
Bye.